Before we begin the meeting, if we could have, Elisa Doyle is gonna swear us in for another unpaid term of volunteerism.
Do you want us to come down in front?
Can we come down in front?
Yes, please.
Okay. Oh, how's my earlobe?
Too late.
Okay. There's some of my accessories here.
Okay, just wait up.
Yep.
Okay, Minister of the Office, because she didn't reappoint it by council, and what I'm gonna do, I'm just gonna read it to all three of you, so I won't have to bore you with all of that, and then if you'll answer me at the end, if you're all ready to go ahead. Okay, I, Willie Larchman, Kirk Pratt, I would like to solemnly affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties as an appointed board member of the planning and zoning commission. I am not the holder of any unaccounting for public money due to state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state which I by the laws of the state of Georgia am prohibited from holding. I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the constitutions and laws of Georgia. I will perform the duties in my office in the best interest of the city of Billerica to the best of my ability without fear, favor, affection, or more or expectation thereof.
Okay.
I give you all to sign this form, and then we're gonna get a picture made. Let's see, this really, uh, it's on off on that, and it's way side. I'll have a picture made, so you'll help one second. The rest of them, like, what years, just get back.
Seems that the last I know is much shorter.
What all the nails? But we did cut it, though. Okay, we'll kinda group together, let Bonna take our picture.
Smile, goodbye.
Ready? Thank you, you're all.
Thank you. You need these? First up is the adoption of the agenda. We have old business, approval of the minutes. Does everybody have a copy of the old minutes?
Yep.
Okay, if there's any questions, otherwise entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, I think, make an addition to the agenda, but since John is not here, or Larry, you know, we need to elect a chair and a vice chair.
Correct.
For this, this group, but I don't know why we can't wait until the next meeting when John and Larry.
That's fine.
Are here, so.
That's fine.
Okay, fine.
All right.
I move approval of the agenda.
Of the minutes?
Oh, yeah.
This is the only minute for the minutes.
Of the agenda, of the agenda.
I need bifocals. Yes, of the agenda.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, motion has approved to adopt the agenda. Next up is old business, your approval of the minutes. Does everybody have a copy of the minutes?
Yeah, and I have a comment.
All right.
On the minutes, if I can find them. Now, what'd I do with them?
Need a look at mine?
No.
Got it.
On the, on the second page, the last paragraph, it says, Commissioner asked Mr. Milliron if there was anything the board wanted to consider. I think the minutes should reflect what Commissioner said that.
Okay.
Just says Commissioner asked, and again, I think the, the minutes should reflect who it was.
Okay, who was it? Do you remember?
Probably me.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner, and, got it. Anything else?
Nope.
Anything, Willie?
No.
Okay.
Move approval of the minutes as amended?
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as amended. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries 3-0. Sign this. All right, next up is the section of rezoning and annexation. Vicki, did you wanna read the first one, or you want me to read it? Okay, that's fine. It's, it's got the red on it. There we go, okay.
Good evening. Good evening, this is case number RA dash zero one dash seventeen. The applicant is Mr. Doug Dickinson of Billerica, Georgia, and he's requesting a zoning map amendment for a property located at Edge Road. This is parcel number V zero six zero zero seven dash zero one four four. The property is currently zoned rural development, and he's requesting a rezoning to light industrial. I would like to point out, just very quickly, we did receive some additional information earlier today, but in essence, staff had an opportunity to re, excuse me, to review the rezoning request. Currently, the property is designated as low-density residential on the future land use map with a designation of one to four dwelling units per acre. The request to light industrial is not consistent with the future land use map designation for the area. Staff reviewed the surrounding property, properties and those uses. The properties to the east are designated industrial, however, moving to the west, it is surrounded by land that is all designated for low-density residential, and in some instances, some of the current uses on the adjacent properties are actually used as low-density residential. So, some parts are vacant and haven't been developed, but they're designated as low-density residential, while others are currently developed as low-density residential. From the staff review, the information and staff's recommendation is a denial based upon the future land use map designation and what's proposed on the future land use map.
Okay, the, you were saying, information was given to you early today, does it alter what was in the packet at all?
It does improve, if you will, the information in terms of what the proposed uses and layout of the property. So, there is a site plan. I was going to let the applicant come up and actually explain the additional information that was included.
Okay.
So, the, what is basically a proposed subdivision, an industrial subdivision, if you will, that layout was provided to staff earlier, and it was not included at the time of the application submittal.
Okay.
Vicki, did you say, what did you say, the current zoning?
The current zoning on the property is RD rural development.
Okay, good.
Okay, how this'll work is, we're gonna have the applicant come up first. If there's a, this is at the bottom, if a group wishes to speak, one person must be designated to speak for the group, and you'll sign in. There's a sign-in sheet with your name and address, and when you address the microphone, give us your name and address, and all public comments are limited to ten minutes. So, first up will be the applicant, or the representative of the applicant, and to review what the plans are and all that stuff.
How you doing? My name is Doug Dickinson. Back in two thousand eight, we started the original development on my property that, that was affront Liberty Road, and Mr. Cole.
Excuse me. Can we wait through this to the mic?
Excuse me. Okay. In two thousand eight, as you see, there's a cul-de-sac that comes down. I've got the original approved plans that came off of Liberty Road, and dead ends into this piece of property with a light industrial road access, because there's a gas line to the north of this piece of property, the full length of it. Mr. Cole had contacted the city, and to get it zoned back in, in two thousand seven or eight, when he contacted him, they said the only way to be zoned industrial is to have access to Liberty Road. So, Mr. Cole paid me, and I donated the land, he paid me for the development, and we brought a road from Liberty Road into the end of that, my property, and dead end of the cul-de-sac with a light industrial road and a water service. At that point, the economy dropped out, and nothing went forward up until the last one or two years that we can finish developing the road in front of it. But, we would be looking to extend that road straight through Mr. Cole's property, just like he shows there, and using the same type development, you know, electric, whatever's in light industrial zoning, selling those lots for small businesses like paving contractors, plumbing contractors, electrical contractors, that sort of thing. But that's our plan, is to just continue that road up through the middle of the property, cutting out lots for light industrial use.
Okay.
The, the north, there's not any, there, from the gas line, there's approximately, I think the closest place to a subdivision is about four hundred feet through the woods before you get to the subdivision to the north. There is three or four houses to the south, at the end of South Wilson, and I don't, I don't understand why, these, these were given the day of the application was turned in. I don't, I don't know why y'all didn't get a copy of this, but this was turned in the day of the application. And to the west of that property, straight across South Wilson's where the old sewer plant and the dump area was, if y'all are down at the end of South Wilson, on the right hand, on the west end of the road, if you follow where I'm talking about. But that's where that would go straight into where the water, water plant gate used to be.
Okay.
Now, with all of the material that you sent, that we've received, I've seen no planned use of the property. This is the first I've seen of the division. So, you're, you're planning on reselling lots within this?
Develop it and sell lots, light industrial lots, for plumbing companies, electrical companies, irrigation companies, landscapers, just like the use that we're using, the, the current road coming off Liberty Road down there to that cul-de-sac.
Okay.
Now, you represent Magnum Paving?
Correct.
Is there any paving?
I have, I have a current lot on Liberty Road that we park equipment, Dickinson Investments, Magnum Paving. Magnum Paving eventually have a lot, one of these lots, would use one of those back there.
And how big are those lots?
I don't know the, the size, do you remember? Yeah, they vary from acre to three acres, I think.
So, this is more or less like a conceptual?
That's correct.
At this point, okay. Okay.
But that, that piece of property has, has no access to any other road. I mean, for a subdivision, it would have to come out that light industrial road. It has no other access. It doesn't go to South Wilson, and it doesn't, and it's cut off at the gas line.
Okay.
So, that is the only access. I, I can't see a subdivision coming through that industrial road to Liberty Road for, for access, but there is no other access for that piece of property for a county road.
There's gas, is there any water and sewer?
Water's in the cul-de-sac already.
And what about sewer?
That's on the property.
What about sewer?
Sewer, there is not any.
So, you would have to provide that?
Or testing for, for septic tank, one or the other, or provide sewer.
I guess, it's not clear to me why this development and changing the zoning from rural development to this concept.
Because that's the only, that's the only access into this property. There is no other access to this piece of property, except to go down that light industrial road off of Liberty. It has no, it, its address is Edge Road, because that was Mr. Cole's address that, that came all the way from Edge, but during two thousand eight, nineteen, he had to sell off all his property just to be able to survive through the economy. He owed money on building this road into the property.
Now, he currently owns the property, or do you own the property?
He owns the property.
So, if this zoning doesn't go through, what happens?
He'll still own the property.
Okay.
I can't use, there's no, there, I couldn't build a residential development there and access Liberty Road through this industrial park if I wanted to, and nobody else can. I mean, they'll have to find another access to that property to be able to do it with something else, but that's the only access for that property.
It looks like the, just eyeballing from this small picture, the gas line is basically the, the north line of this track, in other words, the top part.
This gives you a better sense.
Yeah, that's the gas line.
That gas line's the north part of the line, and this is the cul-de-sac in his property.
Okay, and that's a drop-off right there for right now, right? Where, is that a drop-off from?
That's a pretty good drop-off.
Yeah, okay, all right.
The cul-de-sac, this is Liberty Road access, but it doesn't, it, the property ends here, so it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't make it, is that sound, yeah, that sounds, yeah, it doesn't make it to there. Property is here. You have a couple of, or I have, I've got also.
I got.
I've got this, might be helpful to you.
So, and I guess what I'm looking at.
This is the end, that, the cul-de-sac is in there.
This piece does not, now that I see this, it does not go all the way to Wilson Road. So, that, yeah, okay, now I see what you're saying, all right. You need to see, you got?
Uh, yeah.
You got that?
This is, this is something, this is the, the access, the cul-de-sac is in the end of this, and then South Wilson is up here. It curves up this way.
Okay.
That's where the original development was from the front side half, but this is where the cul-de-sac ends, and the property right here, light industrial, is where that currently ends. And the gas line runs just north of Liberty Line.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant, or?
I don't have any other for him.
Willie, you're good? Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Okay, at this point, would anybody else like to speak in favor of this project? Please come to the microphone. Okay, if not, um.
Anybody opposed?
I guess, I can't see behind this now. Yeah, let's just go ahead and move it, so they can. Yeah, yeah. So, how many are here, let's, let's do this a little different, are here in opposition to this proposal? Okay, I'll tell you what, you don't have to do the group thing, if you wanna come up one at a time, and what we could do is that if, if you, I guess the rule could be, if you, if somebody else has already said it, and if you got something new, pile it on, because I don't wanna exclude anybody. So, if anyone would like to speak against this, please come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and let's hear your side.
My name is Frank Hudson, I live at one zero zero six seven East Foster Court, Billerica, Georgia, and I just have a few questions.
Okay.
How much undeveloped property is zoned this way now in Billerica? Do we need forty-five more acres, I guess is a better question? I think that's something that you all should consider.
Okay.
I went out, I pulled up on tax, CarolTax.com, and took a look out there, whether, there are vacant plots out there now, and I think we need to fill up what we got before we add more. Now, now, if he has tenants already, that's something that needs to be considered too. But, you know, those are my questions for you all. Do we need forty-five more acres? What percentage is undeveloped? What percentage is vacant? There's a lot of vacant buildings when I ride around Billerica. So, I think that those things should be considered in the decision that you all make.
Okay, thank you.
Now, you're asking how much light industrial is available, or RD?
Is, no, light industrial. How much of that is already available right now? And if we have a bunch of it, what do we gain by getting more?
Okay, hang on just a second. Okay, thank you. Would you like to come up? Here we go.
My name is Roger Hudson, I live at three forty-six South Wilson Street, been down there all my life, and what they're proposing is just, it just seems to me that it just do not make any sense. If you, if you own Liberty Road over there, and where the cul-de-sac that he's talking about, yes, it is a cul-de-sac right there, they have been doing a little, I, I don't know, work, I ride my four-wheeler out through there, down the pipeline, and I be looking at, but the road that he's opposing is gonna come over a natural stream that's going down beyond our house, where they say the valley is at? That's a stream, underground stream, and water comes up through there, on behind our property, and then, once you cross over there, to go over to Liberty Road, we're talking about three miles, two, two miles, where he's got a ton of, ton of woods up to make the road, to go beyond our houses. Right now, we, it's nothing but woods, pretty much, but if you put in, in light industrial, that means that we can't lock our doors no more. I mean, we, we, we don't lock our doors. We don't have that problem of a lot of people in and out. So, we just, really and truly, we just do not want this down amongst that way, at least coming from that direction, because if anybody break into those buildings down through there, which way they gonna come? They gonna come towards our houses. They gonna come to our houses, especially if they're not in a car or anything, they gonna come straight through the woods. The road shouldn't be no more than a hundred feet from someone's house, through those woods, you know? We just, we're just not looking forward to having that, and as the other gentleman said, how much land around is it already that they can already go to?
Now, you live on, on Wilson?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir, it's six houses, there are six families down there, in that, in that little hole there, as they wanna, as you wanna put it, at the end of South Wilson.
I guess that would be these?
After that left blue line.
Yeah, right here.
Yes, sir, that road's dead end, South Wilson Street, dead end, and where it dead end at, there's a, it's one, two, three, four, five, six houses down there, and then I say again, if they put that road in, back behind that, like, back behind the, my neighbor's house, that means when she have problem, I'm gonna have problem, because, you know, I look after my neighbor, and I don't want no one to be that close to anything happening to them. So, we're very, very opposed to this.
Okay. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Rob Johnson, I own three fifty South Wilson Street, which it, according to Mr. Dickinson, would put this complex and this mess that he's planning to make through them woods, three hundred foot from my back door. I really don't want nothing three hundred foot from my back door. The woods over there are unspoiled, there's some across the way, which, some, some timber's been sold off of, and there's, there's huge holes. It's just shredded land, and it's ugly. The community he's talking about, we live in, none of us have to lock our door there. It's safe, it's peaceful, and it's quiet. That's why I purchased the property. As far as having all the commotion, and again, tearing up more land, we've got land already that's ready. All you gotta do is put a business there and say, "We're open," but it really don't make sense. It's a natural watershed area, you're talking about messing with nature and trying to reroute a natural spring, which I don't understand why this could even go. I mean, you've got enough people in the county already that's familiar with this, that's saying, "No way." But it's up to you guys.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay.
My name is John Hudson, Jr., and he said he gonna come out on South Wilson Street, go bring the traffic, all them trucks, light cruiser, out on this street that's small, the buses catch trouble coming down through there. Now, and he gonna bring all this traffic off the road, straight over through there, tap all the woods, come to the street, and then have all those trucks running up down the road with the buses, and then the people commuting and subdivision up and down the street with all this excess traffic, coming from the other side, come all the way.
I think it's, and I'm not taking side, believe me, but I think it's coming just from Liberty.
Just from Liberty?
Yeah.
It got to have an exit in.
It's probably be a cul, it looks, well, again, we just saw this map ourselves, but it looks like on the map, it's just gonna be an extension, and then a cul-de-sac going back up.
Oh, it ain't gonna come out of there?
It's not, doesn't look like it's coming down Wilson.
Well, it gonna be wrecked, if it comes to his back door, he gonna be another thousand feet from the road.
Okay.
I'm just, you know.
Oh, yeah, no.
You know, he come up to, the lady on the front lots, the only way that he can come out, he got to push, get a lock, come out, which eventually would, will do. He eventually gonna come straight through there, and then, all that water running down from the waterway, all off that pavement, down to the low place, it feeds all that water down through there, comes off, off the lake and that ground, underground stream that goes round back of them house. When you contribute all that runoff on the asphalt, them heels and stuff down through there, it gonna be some more problems. They gonna come, the, the water level, the high clean water, all that, that's gonna go away, because the trucks gonna be sitting up there, all leaking out of them, and when the water run down, that's the lowest punt down there, gonna come right off them hill, right into the waterway, round down through that to the low place. And it's just, you know, it is not gonna work. I just said. And then all the traffic, the buses just can, they'll get down the road now. And then all the traffic, the buses just can't, they'll get down the road now. 340 South Wilson Street. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else in opposition? Okay. At this point, we're gonna, oh, I'm sorry. Come on up.
I'm Larry J. McLachlan, 360 South Wilson Street. I've been here in Villarica ever since 87. And we, me and my wife built a house standing there. And we love it down in there, peaceful and quiet down there, deals down in there, turkeys down through there. And I used to hunt. And I know this stream going down through there. I know it's historical because they had to search for gold down there, dig for gold. So it's a historical landmark. Even though with the stream coming out of the ground, running water down through there, that's enough to tell you, "No, y'all already know this here. I don't have to tell you." I don't want to see it down there. Don't destroy what God had created. Don't destroy it. Think about it. That's all I have to say. You know, I got a Spencer home down there. Very Spencer home, built brick home. And I don't want nothing to be disturbed down through there.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, at this point, we're gonna close the public section of this. Any questions for staff from our board?
Vicky, you had indicated that you now deny, would deny this application?
That is correct, based upon the consistency with the future land use plan and what was proposed for the area.
The future land use plan being?
The future, the future land use plan designates that particular property as in low-density residential, excuse me.
Well, basically, it's rural development now. Is that what?
It's zone rural development, and that particular property and those surrounding it are, the future land use map even designates it for low-density residential. So one to four dwelling units to the acre.
We're, it was mentioned about a stream on the map where, you know... Sure.
Since that conceptional drawing... Since that conceptional drawing...
I can, I can show you where there's a little stream that actually cuts off where most of the residential houses are, that it goes across that corner, and there'd be a big buffer between their house because that's state, that'd be state waters. You're not gonna fill the stream up. We didn't know that. It on lot...
It would be on that side of that little stream that cuts across here. There is another stream up here in the beginning that comes straight across that would have to be, the road would have to cross straight across. It would be setback based on where, where those lots lay. I think it's more like right in here, that these setbacks, we would have to move them around around that creek. But this creek, there's nothing on this side it would be used for, except housing. You could put three or four houses in there, but we're not in the house building business. That, everything on this side of the creek, we really have no use in, which would be a big buffer between the only three or four houses I know up there, it'd be a big buffer right across here.
Okay, sure.
Wonder why that doesn't show on these maps? Wonder why these streams and creeks don't show?
Okay, had to rein it back in here. Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
If I could...
You could build houses on that side. As it's currently zoned, you could build houses all in there.
Thank you to the mic.
Okay.
Commercial zone, industrial zone, and there would be nothing done on, on your side of that creek, on the south side of that creek.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
So if I can answer one of your original questions, a lot of what you're speaking to typically happens and is reviewed at the time of site development, looking at what those natural features are. They're not necessarily fully addressed at the time of the zoning.
Right.
So...
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you. All right. This time, do I have a recommendation? All right, we're gonna go for a vote then. Do I have anyone in favor, voting in favor of this proposal?
I, I move we not accept the proposal based on staff recommendations. A lot of the community against this development, and the lack of really any specific plans as to what would go in that area if it were rezoned. So based on that, I, I move denial.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second to deny. All those in favor of denial, raise your right hand. I'll go make a 3-0 for denial. Where this goes now, we recommend a denial. It'll go to the city council. Y'all gotta do it again. And do you have to represent to the city council? So it goes, yes? Yeah. Well, that's what you need to bring to the city council meeting. Yeah, yeah. Well, it'll be, it goes to the next city, next Tuesday at 6 o'clock, right here. Yep. Okay, thank you all. All right. Next up, we have, you'll have to explain this, public hearing only. Do we decide something, or do we just listen?
Yes, I, I'll explain. And because this is public hearing only, it will be kind of very helpful if we take these two items concurrently, as far as the discussion goes, since there won't be any vote on this tonight. But what we have is an annexation, the concurrent rezoning request. Green Community Development, they're located at 54, 56 Petrie Boulevard in Atlanta, is requesting to annex properties located at 903, 905, 1,001, 1,009, South Van Wirt Road, and Zero Church Road.
Okay.
There are approximately 10 acres. The property is in the unincorporated portion of Carroll County, and there's approximately, as I mentioned, 10 acres. Carroll County has the property zoned as agricultural, and there's a four-acre minimum on, on that zoning class. They're proposing to annex it into the city, and they're requesting to do, requesting a planned development zoning, planned development zoning, which would include present, ultimately, what would be adoption per the site plan. Carroll County has been notified. We're waiting on the response from Carroll County. We can take action only after we have received our response within a required timeframe from Carroll County. As such, tonight will be essentially just an opportunity to present. It'll come back to you next month, where you will actually provide your ultimate recommendation that will go to city council. City council will take action, if you will, at its May agenda.
All right. So we are gonna hear this first for the annexation argument, and then the next would be for...
Well, just to clarify, what I mentioned is we can take them concurrently.
Okay.
What will happen, just so that you understand, is we separate the action ultimately where annexation, you would annex it into the city.
Right.
Provide a future land use...
But that's for the next meeting.
Yes. And then, you can kind of handle the discussions all at one time, if you will.
All right. So I guess at this time, if the representative for doing this, for annexation and development, would, I guess, step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and why we should consider, or actually, no. Well, we're just listening now.
Hi, my name is Christopher Hunt, Green Community Development, Harkcraft Homes, applicant. There's a color rendering right there. The PUD is within the density allowance of 2.3 units per acre, and it's a community septic system, sewers over 2,000 feet away, and there's topo issues and everything per my engineer. And you see the amount of green buffer that we have around the surroundings. So actually, if we were to do any other type of development, it would be more impactful for all the neighbors. As far as I know, all the neighbors, except for maybe the, let me show you right here. I'd almost like to reserve my time for any rebuttal or any questions or anything like that after staff. I think it's, I'm very excited about the project. They're gonna be lead platinum homes. And the quality of the architecture and the aesthetics, if you notice, we've got a walking trail that'll go around it. That'll just be the wood chips from what we clear up. And we'll have that buffer around it. Then we'll have a little community beehive area there, organic garden. And homes will be net zero. There's a community solar up in the corner there. I'm supposed to stay at the mic here, so. And the nice green space in the middle, I think it's gonna set a precedent and really increase the home values in the area. And we're not, I don't reserve the rest of the time.
Okay. All right, thank you. Well...
Can we ask a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Would this be a homeowners association?
Yes, it would be, yes.
You're charging fees, annual fees for residents?
Yes, for full maintenance of all the properties.
And how big are these lots?
The lots themselves are 60 feet wide, the homes are 40. And then, you can see the depth. And we've got them parceled out with the community area, so they're about a little over 6,000, 7,000 square feet. But the, the issue is, is that, excuse me, I gotta show you. What we're doing is we're separating the gray water from the black water. And the engineers that work with this system say that we would have more than enough land, and we're gonna be getting the perk tests and everything done like that to substantiate it. So we'll be fully accommodating all the laws and rules for this development.
But basically, the lots are pretty small. You're saying 6,000 square feet?
The lot itself, yes. Kind of like townhomes. You might think that if you want to imagine like a townhome community, this is not it. But we are below the amount allowed for a PUD, given the green space. I, I think, I'll wait, I'll defer to staff. I don't think that we're in violation of anything.
That sounds pretty small for a septic system.
Well, the, it, this... Per lot, yes. Per community, no. It's kind of like... So not only will each home have solar, but there's also a solar bank right here that would help energize, give energy to all the homes. So what we have are the amount of green space and the, right here, see all of the septic here? And then here, it all feeds and takes care of it. And when you're separating the gray water and recycling it from the black water, then you don't have as much. And that's where we're gonna get into all the codes and everything that's supposed to be done. They'll have to be state certified. And there won't be any drainage problems. We have a detention pond right here, natural flow, super adequate detention, so water runoff. We're gonna be using pervious concrete on the drives and grass pave. Grass pave is something that's like the Miami Stadium. It looks like grass, but you can park a fire truck on it. So there's gonna be a lot of pervious surface, so the water runoff will be minimized.
Is there any other facility in the state of Georgia that utilizes this community septic concept?
Yes, there are a few, and they are successful. There's some around the nation as well. I'm not asking anybody to trust me. I'm asking people to really be able to look at it and see. But kind of like a Tesla car, it's like totally different. This is proven, it's got his, years of use. And we'll have all the documentation, and we'll be running all the numbers and proving it to everybody that has any concerns or questions. People smarter than me know how to design this stuff.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. What we'll do is you come, whoever's in opposition has questions or anything, just direct it to us, and then the applicant can take notes, and then respond after, like a rebuttal. So at this point, someone would like to come up? Just give us your name and address.
My name is Kevin Cursey, and I'm a resident of 65 Church Road. I live on the road where they failed to tell you where the entrance is gonna come out of this community. It's a small road, maybe two football fields in length, connects Pleasant Grove with Van Wirt Road. I've lived there for 25 years. So I just think that, you know, everything needs to come out as far as what we're talking about here. You're talking about 24 units, two cars a unit, that's very obvious. 48 automobiles dumping out on this road... Forty-eight automobiles dumping out on this road, both roads, and we can bring you pictures for that, both roads, both Van Wert and Pleasant Grove have blind hills on them. Our PD, not Villarica PD because that's actually Carroll County, you know, they nickname it the Villarica bypass coming down Van Wert Road. Other subdivisions who border this, Spring Haven and Autumn Run, have already had to go to the county and ask for speed signs and stuff because of the traffic there. You need to check on the number of buses. Our local high school is there. That's a large amount dumping out every day, every school day, you know, on this. So number one, it's a traffic hazard, you know, for us. Again, it does not have sewer, you need to check again. It does, the soil, I live there, I have a septic tank. The soil is not conducive to good perking, you know. Another thing, the opposition, that nobody's opposed, I lived there twenty-five years. I don't know anybody who is for it that borders around. If the gentleman was mentioning that he emailed a person who has five acres bordering him, a Mr. Henry Puckett, who does not live in this community, he lives out of state, he probably wouldn't have a problem with that, you know, being next door to him. And so, and then as far as sewer being two thousand feet away, I work for the city of Villarica Water and Sewer Department. There is no sewer two thousand feet away. The nearest sewer is behind, actually First Baptist now in the development is pulling sewer from Waterford, which is quite a bit different from two thousand feet there. And the mammoth task to do that, now, when you think about doing that, I think the EPA would be really interested because you've got to cross seventy-eight, you've got to cross a pipeline, you have to cross a creek and I, probably you could build a good case that on both sides of Van Wert coming from seventy-eight, which he would, they would have to cross to give sewer, would be, you would probably have wetland on both sides there. And, and so you can go look at pictures and look at what's happening right now with the creek there. Again, I live there and we've got ducks floating on the side of the road, you know, at the stuff we've got right now. So there's just a lot of, we're not against development, but for the massive amount, again, you're talking twenty-four units, you're not talking about a couple of nice houses. Dumping on a two hundred, a road, two football fields long, which the only way out of that road is Van Wert or Pleasant Grove, Grove, which both have serious traffic problems with blind hills and people coming. Now imagine dumping out forty-eight cars on that little street, you know, back and forth, you know, for their daily work and pleasure and stuff. It's just, I, I just have a real problem with the traffic and the things that we've mentioned to you.
You live on Church Road?
Yes, sir. I've lived there over twenty-five years.
Okay.
Sixty-five Church Road.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Oh, okay. Got ten minutes? No, I'm just kidding.
I'm on the opposing side.
Okay.
I'm Julie Rensink, one fourteen Autumn Run Place. The signs that he mentioned, I'm the HOA secretary of our neighborhood. I'm the one that called and got one of those signs put up. We wanted a slowdown sign or something. At the end of our road, we're on South Van Wert, we've had two fatalities I know of at the entrance of our subdivision because of the speed and the traffic. My children get on the school bus right there. People run that school bus sign every day. We can't handle any more traffic coming out of there. It's just not, it's just not conducive to our property values with more traffic. And what about the construction? They're going to be cutting down through there, you know they are. It's a two-lane road, just to reiterate what he said, and we do have ducks floating. Where that creek floods, that road can't, can't take it. There's no way it's going to be able to absorb what, what he's saying. And he, he just kept saying, green space, green space, green space. Well, la di da, it, it doesn't fix any of the problems that he's going to create. And the, the lots that are six thousand square feet, that's too many houses and too small of a space for, for what's going on. And, I mean, why here? What, what, I, I don't understand why come from Buckhead to Villarica, of all places, to, to build this development? I don't, I don't get it. This is, this is not Villarica. This is not just, you know, a couple of nice houses. This is, this isn't us and we don't want it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Actually, the mic. But yeah, you can.
Now, where is this?
This is on South Van Wert, about, oh, it joins Kevin's Road, the road that he wants to come in on.
Church Road.
The road, it's a twenty-five foot county road. My name is Richard Euler. I live at twelve-ten South Van Wert Road. I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, didn't Georgia just kick Tesla out of the state?
I don't know.
You know, it was on the news and I think, my first question, and I'm a county resident, is as city planners, how many empty apartments do you have in the city? Hundreds. Why would you even want to take this on? And if I'm not mistaken, you'd have to annex from seventy-eight all the way to this property to annex into the city, which that is on. And you'd be responsible for the maintenance of that. The culverts on South Van Wert at that creek, which flows into the Ulta Huesa, excuse me, has blown out twice and had to be repaired and replaced since I've been there. My property is ten acres.
And his property is?
Ten times that. We bought out here for the simple reason, it was rural. We could buy a bunch of land. That's why Carroll County has this at acreage per lot. This will not perk. I have a neighbor that has four acres that has a twenty thousand dollar sewer system because the land will not perk. So you're taking on a lot of responsibility, a lot of things that aren't known from somebody from, as she said, Buckhead. Well, this isn't Buckhead and why this would happen in our community and not somewhere closer to Buckhead where it's green space and feasible, they want to come out here to test the waters. Well, these waters aren't going to work, I don't think, because we're going to fight it with everything we have, with the entire community that is now living off of South Van Wert and right by this property, you know. But I think as planning people, you know, part of your planning and this young lady right here, you know, what's your future property going to look like and what are you going to do with what you have now, not something that's proposed in the future, which is, you know, maybe feasible somewhere else, but right now at this time that we have and what we're doing presently, that's the future, all right, and I'll probably be dead. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hang on just a second.
My name's Karen Adaway. I live in Autumn Run subdivision, which is right off of South Van Wert Road. My, we, this is emotional for me, I'm sorry. This is my home. I moved out here from Douglasville to get away from all of the apartments. I came out here to be with family and to develop friends that became family. And when you start bringing in apartments, this is just glorified apartments. This isn't little townhomes or homes. This is glorified apartments. That's not what we want. When, I'm sure all of us, when we moved here, we moved here to have a relaxing, easy-paced country living and bring this in and there goes our country living. There goes our quaint little neighborhoods. There goes our being able to walk on this, in our subdivision for exercise because who knows what this is going to bring up. I don't want to be derogatory or anything, but I've lived in apartments when I started my life as the early twenties. There's theft, there's robbery, there's break-in. We don't have that right now. And if you bring this in, we're going to have that. And on top of that, you're going to have more deaths on our road because our road isn't being able to handle what it's got. And the little road that they're going to have to come in and out of that's between South Van Wert and the church, a bus doesn't hardly even fit through there, let alone forty-eight cars. So just take into consideration, yes, I would like to have more families come in, but let it be families that are ready to own property and those that want to have apartment life, stay in the city and be city life. They don't need to come to the country.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we got to do the...
I'm sorry. There are three hundred and fourteen school buses that come down South Van Wert to the high school, down and across to the middle school every day. Three hundred and fourteen. Check it. Where's my Buckhead guy? You check it. You know, it's a, it's not conducive to something like this.
Okay. Oh, you don't have to sign again, I'm sorry.
I didn't.
You just have to get to the microphone so everybody can hear you.
I didn't sign the first time, I apologize.
Oh, well, we'll have to, we'll have to cut and, we'll have to cut and paste his remarks to the time and we'll get the IT people on that, so. Okay. Oh, your name and address, please.
My name, my name is Emily Hamilton and I've lived here since two thousand and three. That's when I bought the little house. It's a nice little home, it's a brick home, it's very nice. It doesn't need to be next to what he's going to build and I'm, I'm right there across the street from it, on the same street, because it, it, what he's talking about is on Church Road and then it goes up South Van Wert. So I would just like to show that my opposition is that I don't think it would be good for Villarica and certainly it wouldn't be good for me.
Okay. Is, if anyone would like to, all right, thank you, ma'am. If there's anything new to add, does anybody have anything? Sure. This is why we go and get state training so we can tell people.
All right. My name is James Burdette. I am at one-three-one Autumn Run Place here in Villarica and Carroll County. Everyone's already said everything eloquently, even though I'm a retired pastor, this would, I could start on something else here, but I won't. But the question is, a few moments ago, the statement was that Carroll County had to respond. I had a conversation with my, Mr. Lee, who is the commissioner, and they have no, at least from his point of view, they, they don't know anything about that. Who, who is it from Carroll County that must respond?
Yes, Vicki could handle that. Okay. That was your one and only question?
That was it. I want to know who.
All right. Thank you. Well, you'll get a chance to rebut and answer all the questions. Go ahead and answer that one.
So with any annexation request that ever, that comes into a municipality, and first, let me just say this, annexation laws are state laws, so they don't vary from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. But when a request comes into a municipality for annexation, the municipality must notify the county. The county has an opportunity to, you know, present an objection based on land use. So in this particular case, you know, if there was some land use objection, they have a certain amount of time for their board of commissioners to take action and notify us. I will say, however, that most of the annexation laws really are skewed toward municipalities. So, you know, in this case, I don't know that there's really a land use objection, whether, and that being, you know, if you were proposing residential, or excuse me, like industrial adjacent to maybe low-density residential, that's kind of the things that they would chime in if there was going to be a true land use objection. But this would be residential, what is surrounded by residential, with something that's proposed residential. So I don't, I don't necessarily know what land use objection that they may make, but those are the things that typically comes back from the planning department, who, who else over there oversees land use analysis and planning.
Do they know about it? I mean, right now it's at the hearing stage. Do they only get notified when it's past the hearing stage and they're coming back before us to, you know, decide?
Well, um, we, we sent out a letter and I'm not sure that I fully understand your question, but...
Does the county know that, that an annexation is being proposed at this point?
We have to send them notice.
Okay.
So, for example, we send them notice and it has to come back certified mail return receipt. That's how we know that they have been notified.
Okay.
So that has been done.
But that's not been done yet.
That has been done.
It has been done. Okay, that's where I was getting at.
Yes.
That's my only question. Okay. Okay.
And how long did they have to respond to?
Um, I believe, and I'd have to go back to, to the state law, they have thirty days, but it's enough time, they've been given enough notice to put it on their, I believe their board of commission meetings meet on the same night, I was told, as our city council. So that is one reason why we give it to them, they respond, and then they let us know, send it back to us in writing whether they have an objection or not.
Okay.
And then, and so that everyone understands the process. If they do choose to make a land use objection, then we go, it's something that we have to sit down and have a discussion about. But again, they have to have a valid land use objection, so.
Okay. All right. I think I saw, was there somebody else over here that wanted to get up and speak?
Okay. My name is Roderick Stidham. I'm president of the Spring Haven Homeowners Association and our sister neighborhood is Autumn Run. I was authorized on behalf of our homeowners association to oppose this development. The concerns were that for the number of houses that are going to be built on this, in this subdivision, that they were, they were concerned that it was too many homes and that the value of these homes, which do, has that, do we know what the average value of these homes are going to be?
He can address that when he's, because I'm going to give a chance to come, try to...
They're, they're concerned about the property values and the traffic, which I see is only one road coming out of here spilling onto South Van Wert and you got three other subdivisions with lots that are at least half an acre or more in size dumping on to Spring Haven, I mean dumping on to South Van Wert. And their concern was the traffic, the lot size, the amount of green space that's going to be taken away. I know I see, he got some there, but that's what their concerns are. And the sewage problem and how that was going to be worked out, how are they going to, how's that going to be managed? That, and now that he said that they're, that these are going to be lead homes, so I could go back to them and tell them... I could go back to them and tell them what the, what that is, and they can even, you know, discern from this, for themselves whether or not that they, if that's something else that they, they want to be concerned about. Because at the next meeting, I'm pretty sure my whole subdivision will be here. And they're going to, they're, they're going to voice their concerns about this. And that's all, that's all I had.
All right. Thank you, sir. At this point, if you'd like to come back up and, oh, do you want to speak? Okay. Sorry. Could you, could you hold just a second? Please go. Okay.
A little short thing here.
Oh, that's fine.
I live at 126 Spring Haven Court. I'm a new resident, and one of the reasons that we bought there is because it's a small community and we, you know, I don't want to see something like this. It's going to be backing up, not to my property, but the people that live in our subdivision, their property is going to be basically touching it, and it's just too many homes for the amount of space, I feel.
What was your name?
My name is Becky Hamilton.
Thank you. Anybody else? Don't want to miss anybody. Okay. At this point, if you'd like to come up and address some of the concerns after our choo-choo makes its way. There you go. There goes the worst of it. Talk about the train.
No, I understand.
There you go.
I've done Stone Mountain, and literally the train is about 50 feet outside, and the whole building rumbles and they have to shut down. Um, first of all, I want to apologize. This is my first time doing business here, and normally I'd like to host some type of a meeting, but this is kind of accelerated, and so, which is good, but I want to apologize. Have any of y'all been to my website, thebesthome.com, and you can look at Green Community, and you'll see, I grew up in the business, I don't know if y'all know the name or not, but, you know, I'm not Buckhead. Actually, our cows used to move back and forth with the Cowards' cows inside 285. That's how native I am, okay? So I know what you're talking about with growth and things like that. One of the things I want to propose, and I'll go ahead and say this, we can put it in writing, I would like to dedicate the funds to improve Church Road and put a traffic light at the end of it. If DOT will approve it, and that's not a cheap thing to do, but hearing what you're saying, I'd like to go ahead and put a traffic light there that'll calm everything down anyways for everybody, and-
Has it been shorted? Doesn't have a traffic light?
Pardon me?
They don't want to make 50 feet from that traffic light.
Okay, well then there's a traffic light there. Well then, okay. And then, if you look at the balance of it, y'all have already said that there are half-acre lots around, okay? That would be 20 homes. Could you imagine 20 curb cuts all along South Van Wert and along Church? It's much better to have one centralized curb cut for safety. We're actually going to be safer than what's there right now that's got four or five curb cuts. So we're going to have to, and I'm sorry about the misunderstanding, I wasn't saying there were sewer, I was saying that sewer is unavailable because it's more than 2,000 feet, so we're in agreeance, you know? That was the semantics, I'm sorry, I didn't say it more clearly. In regards to home values, these will be $300,000 homes, and I think you've got the new hospital medical building here. There's a lot of good growth coming in this area, and it needs to be smart growth. You need to have this most sensitive environmental footprint and the highest aesthetics and quality of homes. And that's why when I was introduced to this property at first, I didn't know what could be done of it, and then someone took me for a tour, and they're really excited about the growth and what's going on in Villarica with the new commercial building, and there's a demographic group that would really like to have this. There's nothing available here that's of this standard quality, and it will enhance the values of your properties. It won't be detrimental. If I were to come in and just put in 20 or whatever type homes at a half acre, it would decimate everything. You wouldn't have any green space, you'd have all these curb cuts, and maybe what I should do is do a drawing to kind of show you what it would look like if we did something like that, and then the quality of homes, you know, wouldn't be as good either. So I hear your concerns, and I would like, now, we're supposed to be having a meeting Tuesday, coming up pretty quick, huh?
Yeah, that's next week. Is the council going to be hearing, there'll be a hearing at the council as well? Just a hearing? Okay.
Okay.
It'll be this times two, so it'll be doing this all over again at the city council.
Right. And what I would like to do is, I'm sorry, sir, your name is Robert? Robert?
Roderick.
Roderick, hey. My information, we can share it, how about if we host a meeting and we go through and everybody put down what your concerns are? I heard most of them. And, you know, to be honest with you, there's only so much I can do. I mean, I, you know, this is low-density, believe it or not, you know, it doesn't look like it from what you're use, what you're thinking, but it's being annexed and, you know, half-acre lots with a little bit of extra that's allowed by the rules. We're not cheating on anything. In fact, so, I, I think it would be very good if we were to have a meeting maybe and just go through the list, and I'd like to find out about the traffic light, whatever that issue is. I understand about the concerns, and I want people to live here, be safe as well. It's going to be a boost to the economy, it's going to be a boost to the home values, and it's really going to make a statement. And I recommend you go to my website and look at it, and then let's talk it through and see where we can come to a consensus, and then see if there's anything that I can incorporate. So, let's see, I think the water runoff, like I said, this subdivision is going to have, if you look at grass pave, and you look at pervious driveways, and you look at detention, where we're going to be able to have the gray water and the black water separated, and we're going to use it for irrigation. So the demand is like half, less than half, actually, 2/3 of your water is gray water. And so, right now, people are using septic systems that are 100 years old, and they just flush everything out in the yard like that. We don't do that. We're going to have it separated, and the only thing, and then these new systems are very environmentally friendly, and they're very, very efficient. So I don't think we're, you know, and besides that, let's just say I'm wrong. Let's say I'm, let's say I'm wrong, okay? Well, that's not a matter for the planning commission or them, it's a matter of math, it's a matter of soil. If I, if, maybe I'll make a mistake, maybe I can only get, you know, a certain amount of homes because it won't perk or whatever the issue is. But you're not going to cheat the state, I can promise you that. So I think that we need to just take perk off, you know, and say, that's, that's not a matter for right now, I can't do anything about the dirt, and, but we can improve the system. And then about traffic, I definitely agree, but I think if you think about it a little bit and you go, wait a minute, what would it be like if we had all these curb cuts all over the place, and he'd cut down all the trees, and he had like a meandering road with a, with a couple cul-de-sacs on it, what would that do? And what would happen if he had, like, you know, inferior homes, like I was here visiting when David was here, and they actually had to shut down a builder because he had crazy crap construction, you know? And so that's not going to be this. And so I think you'll be very proud of it, yes-
Chris, are you saying these are $300,000 homes?
Yes. Yeah, they're going to be, they're 40 feet wide, and then they're like 60 feet long, and it's got an upstairs area, that, all of them have rooftops, balconies that have water fecs, and they can have a fire pit up there, and then they have all the views to the back are private. So what happens is they're very close, very quaint, like Villarica, if you look at one of the city maps of what Villarica was like, nice little country, nice little city home things, next door to each other, 20 feet between each home, so it's not apartments, it's not apartments. If anything, these people here are the type that work at the new hospital complex, that work at the new office buildings that are coming in, these are the type of people that are here that'll be helping, they'll be very, very good, very responsible neighbors.
What's the square footage on these houses? I mean, these are all, this is, they're four houses that you showed that are identical, different facade, but-
Exactly. They have different elevations, the interior floor plan will have some slight variations. I was just trying to show the quality of it with the brick and the stone. There'll be four-sided brick stucco and stone with 25%, and it won't have any wood, really. It's going to be 25% like hardy plank, like a concrete board for architectural purposes.
And why are you interested in annexing to Villarica?
Because of the opportunity to have the zoning and to maximize for the constitutional use of the property and to be an asset to the county, city. I was warmly embraced and encouraged with this by the city, and I can understand there could be a little bit of pushback because some people might not understand what it's going to be like, but I think what I'll do is I'll go to the trouble of designing a subdivision and show what it would be like, and there, you know, they wouldn't be able to argue about it, there wouldn't be any request or anything like that, that, I mean, it'd be, you know, it wouldn't be pretty. I, I think this is much, much better, and this is going to be a lot better aesthetically. No one can see each other, you won't even know it's there, you know?
All right.
Do you have any subdivisions like this elsewhere, anyone?
Um, I'll, I can email Roderick, and he can-
Well, it doesn't represent all of them.
Oh.
Yep.
It's multiple.
What? Well, I-
Okay, at this, okay, at this point, since it's a hearing, what we're going to do is wrap it up, and next Tuesday, get to do this all over again with the city council. And so what I would do, you know, on both sides, is you heard their questions, and you heard what he had to say, is you all get together, come back up here next Tuesday, when does it start, at 6?
6.
6 o'clock? And do it all over again.
That's right.
Because there's-
Sure.
Just clarify for me.
Steve, what comes to the point? I-
To the microphone.
Do you have to annex from, from 78 back to this property? What exactly are you annexing? Forget his property, how are you getting to his property?
Okay. No, we're not annexing back from 78. They're doing a 100% method of annexation, let me just make that clear. You have to already be contiguous to the city line, so you establish contiguity in order to be able to make the application to the city, so.
Well, how do you get to that property without annexing in from 78 back to his property? None of it touches the city.
It, it does touch the city. If you look at some of our city maps, and we can-
Pleasant Grove Road is in the city?
I think there's a zoning map. We'll, we'll have that information pulled-
You can see what I'm asking.
Right. I understand what you're asking, and we'll-
It doesn't butt up against current city property. Okay.
So it doesn't, why is he here and why is he not at Carroll County?
It does a butt.
It does a butt. So if, yeah, if you, if you're contiguous, then you have the op, the opportunity to make application for an annexation.
Okay. All right. All right, well, thank you all. We're going to move on at this point to staff comments. Vicki Coleman, you already got there.
Um, I think we have pretty much covered, I don't have any other additional comments. You know, I've provided the-
Jason coming up or any of that, or not?
That's pretty much it. It's, right now, as it stands, the only one that I'm aware is really this one, which will be coming back. Staff will be preparing its full analysis with the packets that go, will come to you next month, and that will go to the city council.
All right.
Where do we stand on a community development director?
Um, I know the position closes on the 31st. I would certainly say, I know it's a community development manager, I don't know when a decision will ultimately be made. I don't know if that's going to be contingent upon the city manager being in place, because that, I know that position will, will report to the city manager, so in terms of the timing of it, I, I wish I had answers for you, but I don't.
I mean, there are things that this commission has got to take on, not the least of which is the comprehensive long-range plan for Villarica.
Sure.
And we haven't even begun.
The planning process, right. I know that has to be adopted by October of 2018, so that planning process should start this year. So I'm very familiar, certainly have gone through that process a number of times other places, but yes, that person will be responsible for that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next up, if you haven't already, it's time for public comment. So if you have something else to say, or something of the same, or whatever you want to talk about, please step forward, name and address.
I was going to say one real quick last little bit thing that you brought up.
You're asking about the City of Villarica Community Planner/Manager position? Shouldn't that person be available now to determine whether or not City of Villarica takes on more property?
Nothing we can do about that.
Yep.
I mean, we could postpone until next year, until that person's hired.
Yep.
I, I may seem out of place, but I would like to speak on behalf of the growth of Villarica, and-
Everybody, come down, please. Thank you.
There's going to be, Atlanta's growing. My dad said Atlanta's one of the unique cities in the United States where there's no natural barriers. There's no mountains, there's no rivers, lakes, and things like that that are going to hinder it. And there's going to be growth, and your input is very, very, very important, and I hope you'll see that I'll go the extra mile, I'll work with you all everywhere we can. But I think that the city council has got to be leaders. Can you imagine, I mean, I was there when 400, you talk about an uproar. Imagine when people are trying to think about 400. Now nobody can believe that they, that you couldn't live in Atlanta without a 400. And perimeter mall area, you know? I mean, like I said, we were one mile inside 285 with cows before there was a 285. Now, I know you're going to say, oh my God, that's the last thing we want to do, but I'm, I'm telling you that as leaders, you guys have got to make decisions and say, you know what? This is either good or it's bad. Yeah, it's change, it's going to happen, but is it good change? Is it really, I mean, you've got to look at the demographic group, at these doctors that are coming in, these medical people that are coming in, all these professionals that are coming in, you know, that they're going to want houses. And, you know, I'm, I'm trying to help meet a need and do it in a way that's going to be as cooperative as possible, and I'd like to try to meet this weekend, if it's possible. I'm going to be flying and then coming back, and maybe we can get together and just talk it through. But my public comment is, you have to be leaders, you know, and you've got to say, and I'm open to constructive criticism, anything, but you've got to say, okay, there's, we've got to meet the needs of everybody, how can we do it as wisely as possible?
Well, that's the purpose of the long-range plan. That's why we develop a comprehensive long-range plan for the City of Villarica, and that is totally grossly out of date. Now, there are people that are saying that this city is going to grow, right now we're about 14,000 people, they're saying 25,000 people in by 19 or by 20, whatever. I don't see that growth happening, but that's why we need to do the comprehensive long-range plan. And we don't even have a community development director, but we've got to get that done, and that's where this is going to come in. Not your 20-house development, that might be part of it, but we need a comprehensive plan for where is this city going? And how's it going to get there?
Yes, sir. I, I agree.
Now, we've got plenty of lots that are available in Villarica that are already in existence, that are sewer, there are water, people can come in and start developing those right now, thousands of them. It's called Mirror Lake.
Okay. I, I understand what you're saying, and yet, there is a development providence or something like that. I'm working with somebody on that because I really like what I'm doing here, and we're going to take a whole wing of that and modify it over. And so about the 20,000- And so about the 20,000, you're going to need a lot more than just these 20 homes, and, you know, I would really.
Absolutely.
I would really behoove you all to say, do we want to set a standard instead of benchmark instead of these people that had the permits yanked because, by Dave, because they were so bad? He was showing me photos, and he was like, man, we want to have your type of quality home here. He wasn't talking about the number of homes, he was talking about the home you're talking about, that's what we want to start having here. And so, we're just, and I think Vicki would address the issue that within the comprehensive plan, you're going to have to grow certain areas, the annexation, and it's low-density. I mean, it's low-density residential, so I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get off on that, but.
That's fine. All right. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Okay.
Rick Weller, again, since we don't have any leaders out here, let me just say, what happened to him trying this in Douglasville or Powder Springs or the five other towns between here and Atlanta? They wouldn't have it, it doesn't work. How many apartments do we have in Villarica, just like you say, that are already sewed, that are already watered, that you can't sell now? How many vacant lots are there in the county? There's hundreds. Drive down South Van Wert from one end to the other, you'll see 300 acres of land that's been for sale for 10, 15 years. Why? We buy 10 acres at a time. I'm sorry, he can't build his houses where he wants to, because my house is all final. It doesn't fit into his facade. Those doctors will drive by my house and say, damn, who lives there in that 6,000-foot Bible home? Me! And if he comes in, one of them doctors can buy my place, because I'm going to sell it, because of the safety issues, because of the traffic issues. That alone should keep anybody who's a leader from approving this project. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
I move for adjournment.
We have a motion to adjourn in a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We adjourn. Again, this is a hearing, so, next Tuesday, city council meeting, we do it all again. I say we, they do it again. Y'all do it again. Thank you for coming, sir, and ladies and gentlemen.